So at the end of the meeting, I just need you guys to hang out for like five minutes so that I can run downstairs and run the reports for you to sign.
We can sign it. Hopefully, there's no changes and that'll make it easy.
It'll be nice.
No changes.
Okay, I'll go do it.
I heard that loud and clear.
I mean, good news in terms of changes is that there's no one new in the audience.
Right.
I don't think you're a busy man.
Uh, we have Deputy Chief Buffington online, but I don't see anyone else.
Ted Van Zant was on. He was on.
Similar story, though, not new.
It was a friend, I guess.
Still not new, which means it should run pretty quick.
For a street, you plow it a certain way and it'll feel the first foot.
Is your plan just to go through each article, give a quick explanation? And then what I need you guys to say is we recommend or we don't recommend.
Yeah, so we need to do that on all of ours, but not on zoning.
Or the, uh, non-zoning, or Article eight or nine.
I would correct.
You don't need to do those either.
I mean, that's, that's most of it.
Could on Articles eight and nine.
I think like anybody.
We do on the others, we could on eight and nine.
Now, this already says recommended by the board for ease of when I gotta go downstairs and run the reports, but I can change it as.
For everything it says that?
From ten on, yes.
So you don't have that said for eight and nine?
I don't have it on eight and nine.
Usually you don't, usually you don't recommend or not recommend anything that isn't really in the board's power.
Email's spelled that way these days.
In our power.
That's okay. I like getting up early in the morning.
You can't change these without a vote of the town meeting.
But that's the point, is that we're asking, we're suggesting that the town changes these things.
Right, but you can have, you have no power over these.
We have the power to recommend.
Technically, I have no power over any of them. The town doesn't vote for the warrant article items.
Money you do.
If you let it go and you don't respond.
You can vote if the town votes against.
I mean, technically, we wouldn't have to put these warrant articles on if we didn't want to continue those tax breaks.
I'm enjoying it.
Right, but DRA would be all over you if you did not, because that's why we get them on there, because DRA was all over us to put them on.
Oh, when I read that email, I thought that DRA was suggesting if we don't do them, we basically would go back to a $50.
Right, but to keep our $250, you need to keep them on there.
Which is effectively us recommending that we do it.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue. No, I'm done. Right?
Right. Right. All right, hey, it's five o'clock. Let's make this happen. Call a meeting to order. Uh, we're gonna do pledge. Scott, why don't you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zach, Neil won't be here tonight?
I was, I had not seen that, but.
Neil, he's not still feeling.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, so.
Online, right? Neil's not online either?
No.
Okay. No. Yeah, I don't see the participants list. Okay, so we have a couple of things tonight. First, uh, this is technically the second hearing for the 2023-2024 budget. Uh, given that we have no new attendees in the audience, I'm not gonna go exhaustively through that budget again like we did a couple of weeks ago. Um, but I will open it up to if anyone has any questions, anything that's come up from this particular group in the ensuing weeks, I'll, I'll open it up to any, uh, any public comment. Oh, it does look like maybe we have somebody, do we have someone online? I'm seeing no audio on the chat.
Where's Mouse?
We have audio now. Online participants.
Is it the town?
Should be good now.
Should be good. Should be good. All right, good. So I'm just looking at who we have online. It looks like us, us, and.
Dan Marion.
Dan Marion.
And Nate Buffington.
Just a couple of comments if I can on the budget from last week.
Yeah, please.
So just a couple of points of interest of what was changed on the budget after our meeting last week. Um, those that were in attendance saw Pemmy Youth Center come in and asked for additional funding back. Um, that was put back into the budget. That raised it from $5,000 to $8,000 under the nonprofits for the Pemmy Youth Center. And then just for another point of interest is that, um, in speaking with Chief Morrison, with the fire department raise increases, the, um, union employees will get a 1.5% based on the collective bargaining agreement. Those that are not in the union would receive a 2.5% just for clarification under that.
Right, because we had said 2.5, but it actually, you're right, because of the, the union, it is 1.5.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, good clarification. Are there any other questions from the audience about the 2023-2024 budget? Anybody online with any questions? All right, I will, I will call that to completion then. Um, do we need to, to vote to accept that budget, or do we, should we just go straight into the warrant articles since it's represented in here?
You're basically voting to either recommend or not recommend, and that is your vote to accept the budget. Yep.
Effectively is the vote. Okay, perfect. So let's get in to the warrant. Reminder that the, uh, the annual meeting will have, uh, will be meeting, uh, on, voting will occur on March 14th, and the polls will be open from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Plymouth Elementary School Gymnasium. Uh, so we will do that official ballot voting on that day, followed by the in-person town meeting on Wednesday, which will be at 7:00 PM, again in the Plymouth Elementary School Gymnasium. So those dates, March 14th and March 15th. So with that, let's get in. The, the first article, uh, that we will have on the warrant will be election of officers. The following town officers will appear on the town ballot for this year. Uh, the select board, two positions that are three-year terms. Uh, moderator, which is one position, it's a two-year term. Trustees of the trust fund, one position, three-year term. Library trustees, three positions, three-year terms. And cemetery trustee, one position, three-year term. So that'll all be ballot initiative. And then the next five articles, Articles two through six, are zoning amendments. Uh, officially, do I need to read those?
I don't think you need to read through those.
Okay, so those were, those all came from the planning board. Uh, they've all been read in the planning board meetings. Uh, so if anyone is, is interested in more clarifications from those, go back and watch the, uh, the YouTube from the hearing that the planning board had on Articles two through six.
Seven.
Uh, two through seven. Thank you for the clarification. Articles two through seven, which are all zoning amendments.
Zach.
And those will be on the ballot?
Yes. Um, on Article one, again, Josie just pointed out that I did not have the treasurer for a three-year term on there, so I will add that on there as well.
Okay, thank you. So addition to Article one is a treasurer, uh, one position, three-year term?
Yes.
So you want me to make a motion on the board recommendation on those?
No, we don't have to recommend any of those first seven.
All right, perfect.
All right, that takes us to Article eight. I'm gonna read this article, and then, uh, Scott, if you wanna speak to both kind of this one, actually, why don't I read both Articles eight and nine, and then you can speak to what these are all about. Uh, so Article eight is to re-adopt optional veterans' tax credit. Shall the town vote to approve the re-adoption of the optional veterans' tax credit RSA 72:28-2 to allow for the expansion of the eligibility criteria needed to qualify for the optional veterans' tax credit effective April 1st, 2023? The re-adoption of the optional veterans' tax credit, if approved, would continue to offer a $500 annual tax credit on residential property to all honorably discharged veterans that qualify under the current requirements, but as of April 20, April 1st, 2023, it would expand the eligibility requirements to include those individuals that have not yet been discharged from the armed services. And then Article nine, along these same lines, is to re-adopt all veterans' tax credit. Shall the town vote to approve the re-adoption of the all veterans' tax credit to RSA 72:28B to allow for the expansion of the eligibility criteria needed to qualify for the all veterans' tax credit effective April 1st, 2023? The re-adoption of the all veterans' tax credit, if approved, would continue to offer a $500 annual tax credit on residential property to all honorably discharged veterans that qualify under the current requirements of RSA 72:28B, and it would expand the eligibility requirements to now include those of individuals that have not yet been discharged from the armed services.
So a little history to, um, both of these warrant articles is, um, last year, House Bill 1667 amended the eligibility criteria and affects both the standard and the operational veterans' tax credit. In addition to all the, the all veterans' tax credit, so what it does is it, we're required to re-adopt the veterans' tax credit and the expanded eligibility of those that are still serving in the active military and providing, as we do currently, a $500 veterans' tax credit to those. Now, if we award the veterans' tax credit to those that are still in the active military under Article number nine, and during that year, they are dishonorably discharged, we will be able to account for that through the assessing department with a different category that has been established for that purpose, and being able to relook at each one of those individuals in the calendar year to make sure that if they did discharge from the military, it was an honorable discharge just as with the optional veterans' tax credit. So House Bill 1667 required us to, um, put both of these warrant articles on the warrant. Um, we did have conversations with DRA, um, and they provided some suggestive language as well as our assessors provided language, and Attorney Riedigin reviewed the language to make sure it was, um, in compliance with House Bill 1667.
So this basically brings an existing process that we have into compliance with the new laws.
That is correct.
And Scott, did you mention if it does not pass, what happens?
So if this, if both of these don't pass, currently we're at $500 veterans' tax exemption. If they don't pass, it goes back to $50, which is the minimum required by law for veterans' tax exemption.
So I'll make a motion that the board recommend Articles eight and nine.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Right, so, um, I should probably take public comment on these as we go as well?
Sure.
Any public comment on Articles eight and nine?
It's kinda late for that, but.
We could always go back and amend our previous vote. Eh, I didn't figure there'd be any anyway. I'll be better on the next ones. Okay, so Article 10 is the solar array. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $686,000 for the building of a solar array and to authorize the selectmen to issue not more than $686,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and additionally, the maturity and other terms thereof, and to raise and appropriate the bond's first year's payment of interest and principal in the amount of $100,000. Further, to allow the select board to accept any federal and state grants or other incentives that are available towards this project, such as a 30% direct payment in lieu of tax credits from the Inflation Reduction Act, a 10% bonus for being a low moderate income community from the same, and rebates from the Public Utility Commission. The select board theoretically recommends this warrant article. Uh, a three-fifths ballot vote will be required for this to pass. If passed, this will allow the select board to enter into a contract with Barrington Power to build a solar array on town property to offset approximately 70% of the town's current municipal energy needs. The town will receive revenue from the array by selling annual renewable energy credits and annual payments from the New Hampshire Electric Cooperative for the energy generated by the array. After loan and maintenance costs, the expected revenue to the town for the solar array is anticipated to be $22,263 per year, which equates to $1,239,548 over the 30-year life of this project. The estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 20 cents of a thousand in property valuation. Any questions or comments from the audience on Article 10?
Just clarification, we didn't theoretically recommend, we, we recommended it.
Yeah, we have to vote to recommend the warrant article, though.
Yes, we do.
I'll, I'll make a motion that the board recommend warrant Article number 10, solar array.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Now officially recommended. Article 11, South Main Street Infrastructure Project. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,800,000 for the purpose of infrastructure repairs to South Main Street, Warren Street, and Russell Street, and to authorize the selectmen to issue not more than $1,800,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA 33, and to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and additionally, the maturity and other terms thereof, and to raise and appropriate $250,000 for the bond's first year's payment. Three-fifths ballot vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 50 cents of a thousand in property valuation. Any comments or questions from the audience on Article 11?
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to have the board recommend Article 11, South Main Street Infrastructure Project.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Onto Article 12, General Governmental and Department Expenses. This is the overall general budget. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,018,383 for fiscal year 2324, general governmental and departmental expenses as follows. Salaries, fees, and expenses, selectmen's office, $462,784. Election registration, vital statistics, town clerk's office, $167,49. Financial administration, $386,687. Reappraisal of property, $70,000. Contract services, legal, and others, $216,063. Planning and zoning, $216,779. Land use enforcement, $27,058. General government buildings, $78,500. Cemeteries, $73,311. Miscellaneous insurance, workers' comp, liability, and unemployment, $219,467. Advertising and regional associations, $7,004. Police department, $1,790,268. Police dispatch, $567,612. Ambulance, $154,796. Fire department, $1,893,947. Emergency management, $7,138. Street lighting, $60,000. Airport, $8,112. Recycling department, solid waste, $582,608. Pemmy Baker Solid District dues, $4,709. Health office, $10,000. New Hampshire Humane Society, $7,150. Welfare officer, $13,004. Welfare vendor payments, $70,000. Recreation programs, $441,918. Parks and grounds, $288,134. Library, $526,632. Patriotic purposes, $4,700. Other cultural and recreation, $12,100. Conservation commission, $7,000. Care of trees, $7,000. Infrastructure bond payment number eight, which was approved at the 2016 meeting, $214,882. Infrastructure bond payment number three, which was approved at the 2020 meeting, $285,000. Library expansion project bond payment number 13 of $136,971. Majority vote will be required for this article to pass. Estimated tax impact for this warrant article is $10.11 per $1,000 in property valuation. Questions from the audience on Article 12?
Anything? I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article 12, General Governmental and Departmental Expenses.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 13, Hire One Additional Police Officer. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $105,799 for the purpose of hiring one additional police officer. This amount includes wage and benefits. The select board recommend this article. Oh, we will eventually. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 21 cents per $1,000 in property valuation.
Zach, if I can just make a comment on that?
Yes, please.
Um, for everyone that is listening and attending, Chief Hutchins has put together documentation with regards to not only this article, but Article 14, Police Dispatcher. There are copies available in town office as well as other locations and on the website. So if anybody needs additional information, I would ask that you review those documents, and I think it will answer your questions.
Well, we also have, uh, printed copies of those, some sort of handout or something for, for town meeting itself?
Yes, we will.
Fantastic. Any other comments or questions from anywhere?
Make a motion that, uh, the board recommend Article 13, Hire One Additional Police Officer.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 14, Hire One Additional Police Dispatcher. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $80,965 for the purpose of hiring one police dispatcher. This amount includes pay and benefits. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article will be 16 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. And Scott's point on that one as well. Uh, any other questions or comments about the police dispatcher article?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, the board, uh, vote to recommend Article 14, Hire One Additional Police Dispatcher.
Second. Excuse me, a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 15, Full-Time Fire EMS Personnel. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $89,250 for the purpose of funding one additional fire EMS employee. This cost includes pay and benefits for one position. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 18 cents per $1,000 in property valuation.
Chief Morrison has put together a nice flyer that explains the needs of the department with regards to adding an additional firefighter. I believe he will have copies at town meeting as well as the elections and available currently on the website, and if you could drop some off at town hall?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions or comments about Article 15?
I'll make a motion that the board vote to recommend Article 15, Full-Time Fire EMS Personnel.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 16, Tricaster for PBTV. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,000 for the purpose of a new tech tricaster. The broadcast video switch for the studio would propose moving to a tricaster mini, mini model to allow for portability. Majority vote required. Estimated tax impact for this warrant article is 2 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions from the audience on this one? As written, there's an open parentheses that doesn't close that is, uh, hurts my brain.
I'll change it.
Thanks, Ann.
Being said, I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article 16, Tricaster for PBTV.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 17, Townwide Revaluation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $58,000 for a townwide revaluation of property and authorize the withdrawal of $49,000 from the revaluation of property capital reserve fund created for that purpose. The balance of $9,000 is to come from general taxation. The select board, uh, majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 2 cents per $1,000 in valuation. Any questions about the townwide revale?
I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article 17, Townwide Revaluation.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 18, Town Clerk Election Cargo Storage Trailer and Voting Booths. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,540 for the purchase, for the purpose of purchasing a cargo storage trailer and new voting booths. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 3 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. Questions or comments? Personally, I'll be glad to see new voting booths, because the other ones are broken.
All right, I'll make a motion that the board accept, uh, recommend Article 18, Town Clerk Election Cargo Storage Trailer and Voting Booths.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Onto Article 19, Police Parking. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $102,262 for the purchase, purpose of funding the fiscal year 2324 Police Parking Department and to further authorize the withdrawal of $30,000 from the Parking Special Revenue Fund to offset this appropriation. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 15 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions about police parking?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 19, Police Parking.
A second.
Any discussion? $40,000 for the purchase, purpose of purchasing portable radios for the fire department. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 8 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions about fire department portable radios?
I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article 21, Fire Department Portable Radios.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 22, Police Cruiser. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of purchasing a police cruiser. Majority vote required. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 10 cents per $1,000 in property Any comments? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article 22, Police Cruiser.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 23, Fire Department Command Vehicle. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 for the purpose of purchasing a command vehicle for the Plymouth Fire Department. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 15 cents per $1,000 in property Questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh, I have one.
I just want to add that in that brochure that we will distribute, there are details about the portable radios in Article 21, and this request in Article 23.
That's, that's really great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the board recommend Article 23, Fire Department Command Vehicle.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article 24, Highway. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,311,272 for fiscal year 2324 for the Highway Department, and further, to offset this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of $25,000 from the Municipal Transportation Improvement Capital Reserve Fund established for this purpose. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is $2.59 per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 24, Highway.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Article 25, Recycling Center Skidsteer. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of purchasing a skid steer for the recycling center. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 12 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 25, Recycling Center Skidsteer.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Article 26, Pease Public Library Computer Server. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for the purpose of replacing the computer server at Pease Public Library. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 2 cents per $1,000 in property Questions about the library computer server?
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 26, Pease Public Library Computer Server.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Onto Article 27, Capital Projects. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $703,015 for the purpose of funding the following capital projects for fiscal year 2324. Landfill monitoring, $10,000. Pease Library Carpeting, $13,000. Improved road construction projects, $550,015. Crushed gravel, $25,000. Highway building maintenance and repairs, $85,000. Town hall maintenance and repairs, $20,000. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is $1.42 per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions about capital projects?
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 27, Capital Projects.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Onto Article 28, Capital Reserve Deposits. To see if the town will vote to add to the existing capital reserve fund under the provision of RSA 35:1 for the following purpose, and raise and appropriate the respective sum totaling $245,000 to be placed in said funds. Conservation Commission Capital Reserve, $5,000. Town revaluation, $15,000. Ambulance Number Four replacement, $120,000. Material handling equipment, $105,000. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 49 cents per $1,000 in property And I see no hands shooting up to discuss this one either.
All right, I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 28, Capital Reserve Deposits.
Second.
Wow, threw it all off. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Down to the last two. Article 29, Nonprofit and Health Agencies. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $74,040 for the purpose of funding the following nonprofit slash health agencies. Pemme Baker Home Health and Hospice, $15,570. Genesis Lakes Regional Mental Health Agency, $5,000. Transport Central, $2,000. Grafton County Senior Citizens, $15,570. Tri-County Community Action, $5,400. Voices Against Violence, $2,000. American Red Cross, $2,000. Pemme Youth Center, $8,000. KD Communities for Alcohol and Drug-Free Youth, $5,000. CASA Court Appointed Child Advocates, $1,000. Pemme Bridge House, $12,500. Majority vote required. Estimated net tax impact for this warrant article is 15 cents per $1,000 in property valuation. Any questions about nonprofit and health agencies?
I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 29, Nonprofit.
Business that needs to come before.
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
Any discussion about adjournment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so give me like.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah? Go make a couple changes.